That's the signal. The session is now in order. It says special, actually we'll have two special town council meetings tonight. And before we do that, we'd like to have the pledge allegiance. A friend of mine is in the audience. Lisa Haldane, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa. The first thing we're going to have tonight is a a general agenda item is council discussion, possible nomination, and appointment of a Cave Creek council member-elect to fill the vacancy on the town council for the term ending December 2nd, 2024. Paul Elkuma, after many years of faithful and valuable service to the town, both on the planning commission and on the council, has moved and leaving us with a vacancy on the council of one person. In the past, this has always happened before elections. In this case, it happened after election and we have council member elects sitting there already having gone through the fire of a campaign and having been elected and passed on by the voter ship. So to keep things simple, after some consultations, decided to just make a motion and take the height, the person who got the most votes and most votes among the the new members, the non-incumbents, and the second most votes overall, and make a motion and see if we get enough votes to appoint that person to the council, saving some work and keeping the council up to strength. Just doing it very simply. This special appointment would be between the time it was approved, if it is approved, and the meeting on December 2nd, when the new council will be sworn in, and that council member then would just be able to continue after that point. So I'm going to make a motion and there that to nominate and point Cynthia Driscoll as the council member-elect to fill the vacancy on town council with a term ending December 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Discussion from council.
I see why she got more votes than I did.
This is so much easier and so much cleaner when it's post-election.
Sure is. Okay, so I'm going to, we have a quorum here of five, so I'm going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor of appointing Cynthia Driscoll, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five zero. Carla, would you swear? Cynthia, in please. Get your camera ready, Walt.
I need to bring this down a few notches for both of us.
I, Cynthia Driscoll, affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm. Thank you.
Just like to mention that Cynthia has been a member of the planning commission for a number of years. It is a very long time resident. And we look forward to her service, continuing service to the town. So Cynthia, would you take the seat next to Tom, please, when you have?
Don't forget the secret decoder ring.
With no further business on this particular agenda, this, this special meeting for the appointment is closed, adjourned, and we'll move on to the next special town council meeting. And this is the special town council work session with the agenda item being the presentation to council and council discussion regarding the final recommendations of the integrated utilities master plan. I wonder if we could, if the new members of the utility advisory committee would stand, please, by number in the room? Perhaps you'd come to, each of you would come to the podium and introduce yourself? Can we ask you to do that? Come on up.
I'm a resident from Desert Hills and I'm glad to be on the committee.
Well, thank you. We're welcome.
I'm Leanne Sherman. I've been a resident since 2008 and again, very excited to help out.
Welcome.
Lynn Walsh, 35-year resident of Cave Creek and lover of this town.
Hi, Nancy Merlino.
Nancy, welcome. It's nice to see you all in the audience. You're gonna, you're gonna be delus. This is, for those who haven't seen the book, this is the plan. That's about three inches thick, I'd say. Yeah.
Did you get a copy?
So this is going to be presented by the utilities director, so Sean, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So first, I'd like to introduce the project team. That's, we have several people in the audience. Lisa Jackson and Brandy Thigpen and Leah Irvin from Black and Beach. Black Beach took the lead on the project. I also have Brad Hill, who helped us with our water resources, and then Seth Morales with GHD, who helped on the wastewater side of this master plan. So we had a really good team that's been working on this project for over a year now. Actually, we started in December of 2022. It was last August that we actually did a check-in. We actually wanted to talk about the assumptions we were making on the project to make sure that was okay with council before we proceeded. Brian, can you start the presentation? What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kick it off and then we'll go from there. We'll have each of the area experts come up and talk about anything. And then our goal here is actually to solicit comments from council. I know we gave you a little bit of light reading over the weekend with the document itself, but our goal here is to really distill that down. A lot of it's very technical in nature, so that's why we wear our technical hats, but we want to make sure that the policy direction that we're going in is correct for the town. So tonight, we'll go through why an integrated master plan. And obviously, the four components that make that up, the water resources, the water physical system improvements, the wastewater system, and the reclaimed water system. So the town's unique in that for a small jurisdiction, we actually have all encompasses all utility aspects. And then we're going to go through the draft summary of the capital improvement program that, again, the first step in that will be when we update the town's capital improvement program this fall, and we also looked at fundability of that program. And then I'll outline the next steps. We'd like to bring this back to council for actual adoption. Again, it's a very technical document, but we would still like to have it adopted by a resolution. So it gives us some support and implementing the exercises. So tonight, we're going to recap the assumptions that we went over back in August. So it's a year ago, over just over a year ago. And then we're going to present the individual components and then gather any comments that we get from the public and/or the citizens. Well, first question is why an integrated master plan? In the past, agencies used to do individual master plans, but the integrated master plan really highlights the fact that it's a water cycle. So I'll stand aside for a minute. So while we provide water services to the town, we also have wastewater services. Some of that water comes back in return flows, and we actually have to do something beneficial with that, which is, at this point, the effluent that we produce that goes to the Ranch Minyana. But as we move forward, one of the things the town can look forward to is getting a new water resource out of the effluent and be able to actually add to our water portfolio. So it's good to look at all the systems together because they actually intertwine as far as the flow volumes that are going each direction. You know, our wastewater system is much smaller than our water system, but it's still something that's worth us considering. Overall, again, it's a unique system, the fact that we provide services to the Desert Hill system to our west. We have just over 1,800 accounts in Desert Hills. In Cave Creek water itself, we have just under 2,900, so about 4,700, 4,800 total water accounts. Sewer side is much smaller because we only provide sewer services throughout the town core and along Cave Creek Road going south to our border with Carefree and then along Carefree Highway. But in total, you know, the demands in the system aren't great. The problem is that we need to have the water resources available in order to meet all these the demands. And it's really, we have to balance that out to average day demands and peak flows because there's actually a structural difference between being able to provide an average day flow to the system and meeting the peak demands during the summertime. Because things like the Central Arizona Project only allows you to take off so much water in any one month. So we have to balance that. That's part of our thought process.
Sean, can I interrupt? We're having some technical difficulties here. Captain Kirk, Brian is going to see what he can do about it. Tell you what, let's, let's just continue and we up here will not have it in front of us. So we'll just look at the big screens here and we'll like, see if this gets fixed. If it doesn't, we'll just continue. So take over, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor Council, again. So this is trying to graphically explain why an integrated master plan and what we're trying to accomplish with this specific one. We want to establish growth limits. The town has been very progressive in the fact that 2017, they adopted a water policy. We amended that in 2021. We put volumetric limits on accounts. So the town has been very forward-thinking with how to, how to preserve the town's water resources. We want to look at developing redundant water supplies. The town is 95-plus percent dependent on Colorado River supplies brought to us through the Central Arizona Project Canal System. While that's typically a very redundant, reliable system, there's some issues structurally happening with that that's going to impact the town's ability to get water off that canal, physically, legally, get water off the canal. The man, so that, once you get past the supply question, then you get into actual infrastructure questions on the water side. You want to look at things like fire flows, water quality, even the collection system. Make sure we have it sized properly. In our case, a lot of our collection system is oversized, which means we actually have to improve our maintenance system of the system. There's a question that got asked of us to look at with this plan is the dry sewer areas and septic areas. We have two subdivisions that were constructed with dry sewers. That meant that the developer put the sewers in, there were services to the lots, but the actual properties, because the sewers weren't connected to our, our collection system and then brought down to the treatment plant, the, all the individual lots were on septics. So that's one area of conversion that by connecting the dots together, we could then work with those property owners to then make the connection from septic to sewer services for the town. Then there's also another large area we refer to as Black Mountain, east of Cave Creek Road, that there's really no gravity sewer system up there. So we actually did the evaluation of how we could provide gravity sewers up there, what that might look like, what that might cost, and then allow to help those residents to convert from septic over to the town sewer system. And that becomes new water resources. So that feeds into the idea of, well, now what do you do with that water resources? Because currently, all of the effluent is sent to the Ranch Minyana Golf Course, but if we get more customers, it comes to an imbalance point for us, and we actually want to get beneficial use out of that water resource. That goes into optimization of the reclaimed water deliveries. Again, with it all going just to Ranch Minyana right now, and as you've seen on the quarterly reports, when I bring those forward, you'll see there's always an imbalance. If there's a monsoon storm in the summertime, their lakes will fill up and they stop irrigating for a while to the point that we start overflowing. It typically happens in the wintertime where we're overflowing their lake system because we don't have control and another source or place to put that effluent. And then wrapping it all together is how do we expand the town's water resource portfolio? How do we add redundancy to the system? How do we allow for both the existing customers, making sure that we can keep water in the pipes for the existing customers and allow for growth in the town? Because there is still room to grow for the town. So this graphic tries to illustrate all the things that we really looked at for the town. Up in the top, we have the future growth areas and I'll sort of work my way around clockwise from the future growth area. So there's four large state land areas in the town. Apache Wash, Rogers Wash, Willow Springs, and the core site. They comprise in total 11.4 square miles of land. The pre-annexation development agreements with state land in the town require them to bring downtown water resources, but we wanted to look at that. What would it look like if the town was to bring that in and that water resources? Because we have to look at infrastructure availability, not the water resources that we've asked them, unless the town wanted to say, per se, some of the core sites along State Route 74, since that's potentially some commercial development, which would bring in tax base to the town. Do you want to preserve some water resources for that? We also have a lot of properties. The town's water system was built as a private system, so it was basically expanded to those who wanted the services, who wanted to pay for the extensions of the lines. So you'll see a lot of the, there's two colors of beige on this. It doesn't show up that clearly on this graphic, but we actually looked at the future lots. We have existing lots not connected to town water, so they probably have a private well or a community well or hauling water. And then, and have a helm on it. And then we actually looked at the vacant lots. We actually looked at the town's parcel database and identified those parcels who could come up with an ultimate demand that they, they would be if we were to try and extend service to all those properties. And then we looked at committed subdivisions. So the town has a history. You know, we have a lot of subdivisions that are actually plotted prior to the 1980s in their requirement to actually have a final plot, have 100-year assured water supply, which is their certificate of water supply rules. So we have a number of those subdivisions. We accounted for those because in a lot of cases, a lot of them are close to build-out, but not all of them. So there's a lot of vacant lots within those areas. We looked at that as a separate element. The light blue on this map shows where our existing metered service lots are. So you can see it doesn't expand everywhere and there's still a lot of development that could occur. And then we, we've talked about before, the committed cause, CAWS, certificates of assured water supply. So the town does not have a designation of assured water supply. We actually work with ADWR through their assured water supply program. And if the subdivision were to come in in order to meet the 100-year assured water supply rules, they get a certificate that the state issues. The state looks at our town's water portfolio, says, do you have enough water to authorize this? And can you support 100 years' worth of residential growth on that property? So we still have some certificates that are still outstanding, some that have no growth that have been occurred on them, and then some that have what we refer to as significant growth, but we actually mapped them all out. Actually, our town staff, Ryan Hill's behind me, he spent a lot of time working with ADWR staff to actually pull all their certificates together and work through the water balance for the town. So that's a big thing that we worked through. And then we looked at the committed Dwyb, Domestic Water Improvement District. That's that area of the incorporated in the town, on the west side of the town, where years ago, when they annexed into the town, there was a commitment to provide water resources for them. So we broke them out as a separate element and here just to account for them separately. But the goal is to see how we can get water services to them. So having this as the base, we were actually then able to summarize that and do the calculations on what would it take to provide, you know, the different groups of properties with water services in the town. So we, in this map, you're seeing the existing demands in the system, about 1.54 million gallons a day is the average, or build-out. That's actually our average, sorry. And then, so that's about 1,725 acre-feet of water we're providing. And that includes the water we're sending out to Desert Hills at this point, to support that system. So if we look at just the committed certificated areas that have some growth left within them, there's another 221 acre-feet. But we actually have some larger certificated areas that are still outstanding. Effectively, it's a contractual obligation, so totaling 417 acre-feet of water resources that we would need to apply to them. And then as I brought back the subdivisions that were plotted, but prior to the, the rules requiring a certificate of assured water supplies, there's still 120 acre-feet of water to meet all their needs. And then we accounted for about 69 acre-feet for the Domestic Water Improvement District. So if we look at that, we come up with a total demand of 2,552 acre-feet of water to meet the average demand, yearly demand. And then taking a step further, those vacant parcels that currently are not connected to the system and/or are away from the existing system, if they were all to get, wanted to get water service from the town, that's another 504 acre-feet of water. And then the growth areas, that's the state trust land. So again, a lot of water is potentially going to the state threat lands, but the pre-annexation development agreements requires them to bring the water resources to the town. We needed to figure this number out so that we can look back to the infrastructure. How do we provide? If they were to come and were to bring us water resources, can we supply that physically with the infrastructure? So that's what this was looking at. So, well, the numbers are very big on this. It was a way of looking at different scenarios, and then it allows us to get into different growth projections and to see where we think is realistically what we need to be planning for. And then at this point, we're going to have Brad Hill come up and then Brad can start speaking to some of the slides and I'll interject if necessary. And again, this is a workshop, so if council has any questions, let us know. So Brad, you can control it by the mouse, I believe. Or you want to control this?
I can control this? That's probably not a good thing. Oh, you can do it.
I'll do it, okay.
So Mayor and Council, it's an honor and a privilege to speak before you. Again, my name is Brad Hill. I'm an independent consultant as part of the Black and Beach Water Resources Team. So I'm going to go over briefly before we can help you look to the future of alternatives. We got to start with where you're at today. So what this graph illustrates is three columns. The first one is the black, which is the three different types of water supplies that the town has. It has Central Arizona Project Supply, groundwater, and reclaimed water. The next two columns in gray are where, where's the town at today, and some projections of where the town could be added build-outs. I'll step through those. When the important thing with your CAP supply is there are two separate priorities, and that's very important to understand. MNI priority is a much higher priority than what's known as non-Indian agriculture, or on this graph, it says NIA water. And we'll just use those acronyms if that's okay, it's what we do in our, in our water business. So I've got the volumes here and I'll just kind of step. The important one is I have a circle over the CAP NIA water at build-out, and that may occur sooner than build-out is that's very susceptible to drought. And so there's always already some talk amongst the water industry in, in the state that that may go away in just the next several years. So that's an important volume of water and, and its priority. The next one says groundwater. Desert Hills service area has groundwater. Cave Creek service area doesn't.
There should be somewhere in our historical records how much water Cave Creek can get out of our wells. It's got to be there somewhere. I had heard in the past, it's like 300 and something acre-feet, but somewhere in the records, there is something, because when we inherited that water company, it was there.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember. So we've actually looked at the records. So the wells that we do have, I think it is approximately 300 acre-feet of legally available. What we're trying to do is when you drill a, it's not exempt well, a municipal well, you actually go out and you actually do a well designation, a well invaluation, and they'll give you an determination how much water you can, you legally have rights to, whether or not you can get that water out of the ground. And that's what we're going to go, that's what we're working on right now is to figure out of the existing wells that are close to the, to the existing well system in town, well line system, how much physically can we get out? I think it may be close to 300 acre-feet, but we're not sure until we test these. And then you get into the issues of water quality and quantity available in each of those wells. So there's, one's a legal amount of water versus physically how much, because in case of Desert Hills, for example, the three wells we have out in Desert Hills have, I forget the, it's more than 206 acre-feet of water legally available. We physically can't get it out of those wells as they are constructed right now. So we have to balance both of those, but very good point.
Sure, I have a question for you. You said, I believe you said that our cap allocation is approximately 95% of the water that's available to us. Is that correct?
Yes, so.
And where would that other roughly 5% be?
That'd be the, the groundwater that we're pulling out of Desert Hills right now. So, yeah.
Which may have arsenic contamination.
Yes, one of the three wells in Desert Hills does have higher elevated arsenic levels. We actually have to blend with Central Arizona Project water from desert, from Cave Creek. We're looking at doing a wellhead treatment to allow us just not to have to force the water out there, help balance that system out.
Thank you.
Sean, the, the number 300 is recurring again and again. I just did a quick calculation of, of the committed water that we have, that we don't, that if, that we need to do the subdivisions and things that, and the Dwyb on the west side, which matches 300, but in, probably in the Carefree Basin and the additional water we can get out of Desert Hills, it, it just seems to me that we've just got to get answers on groundwater ASAP. So I, what I'd like, we're keeping a list of things I'd like to see. I'd like to see a definitive plan with dates, costs put in place, and then a monthly report to council on how, what the status is of the groundwater operation.
We'll go ahead and do that. Thank you for bringing that up.
So you clearly have a mayor and council clearly jumped to the end and some of the recommendations. I haven't even got through this slide of where you're at today. Absolutely. That is one of the top priorities that we have recommended the town to do. So because both for Cave Creek, that we know there are existing wells historically, and so what, 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 right here on this graph, it shows zero, but you know, we need to explore alternatives. And then the same thing with Desert Hills. So we're kind of mixing on this graph. It was just brought up by council, but I want to put, make clear. CAP is a paper water right number. The Desert Hills at 207, that's the average pumping. That's the physical availability that's been pumped out of those wells. So that's a little bit of a mix.
Just so it's clear to me, for Cave Creek itself, we are pumping a certain amount of water. We may not be potable water, but we are pumping some water into our system.
No, Mayor and Councilmember, no, we actually are currently, none of the Cave Creek wells are currently active, just the three wells in Desert Hills.
Because I thought you said 95% of our water is CAP.
Yes, I think, when I think of it, I look at the entire system, which includes Desert Hills. So the 5% is the Desert Hills three wells, so.
That's important. So our conversation will be both service areas. That's, that's a good point. And then the third water supply that I'm going to touch on, because it's important looking forward, is your reclaimed water. The 206 is roughly what's being delivered today. Depending on the growth scenario that happens here in the town, your reclaimed water could grow substantially. We have the numbers for a little over 300 to could be upwards of 800. So that's an important resource to be keeping your eye on as we look, as we look forward to the planning. So now what we're going to do with this graph is we're going to blend the growth projections, the scenarios that Sean just presented with the water resources, probably the most realistic water resource scenario. And so I'll step through what this graph means, because this is really important for everyone to understand the, how these two interact. And so first of all, the vertical nature of this is either on the left or the right is volume of acre-feet, whether it's MGD or acre, million gallons a day or acre-feet. The x-axis is time, and then interlaid are a bunch of horizontal lines and some other lines. And so I'll step through the growth projection. So Sean, two slides ago, shared with you what was in the green or the moderate growth, or I might refer to as the 3% growth. What was in the blue or the aggressive, in this case, 6% growth, and what is the future growth that, that you have a policy that requires new resources? So those are the three different growth scenarios. Now I'm going to overlay some of the water resources. So the first one is the gray horizontal line. It says full CAP, MNI, NIA, and groundwater. We put that on there because I want to make it clear that if you actually had access to all of the paper water supplies and physical supplies that you have available, you could accommodate under the blue, excuse me, under the green, anything under the moderate from, over the planning horizon. Planning horizon's in 2052. So if you had access to all of those water supplies, but you would be fine to accommodate under the moderate growth. Now, the aggressive growth would be roughly 2045 or so. So you'd have time to breathe and to look for different water supplies. However, we all know, given the conversations going on in the state and the lower basin, that you probably won't have access to all of your, in particular, surface water supplies. So I just, we put on this graph, the next scenario is the CAP MNI only. What if your groundwater went to zero? As Sean mentioned, that there are some challenges with the, and the decrease, the declining production in those wells out of Desert Hills. So one of the challenges, just one of the scenarios on this one would mean if you had only your CAP supply, you would still have roughly 10 years of growth before you had to deal under the green moderate growth scenario. Thank you for turning that one. So we put this one in red because this is the conversation that's going on right now in the state is what is the Bureau Reclamation in Central Arizona Project where declare what's known as a tier-three shortage. There's conversations that it may, may occur in 2027. So we said, what if you, what if Cave Creek had a tier-three shortage on its MNI supplies? So what that means is no non-Indian agriculture. That's been very clear, clearly made already. And then what if you took, and this is an example, so there's been some discussions of ranges of tier, tier decline, and we just used. And we just used the, on this uh, scenario, the least volume, which is the least reduction 14%. So what that means is you could see on this graph, the, the, where the intersection of moderate growth, green and red. Is, as soon as this declared, you're going to have a struggle of, of meeting your water demands. Now, note, this doesn't include groundwater intentionally, so you will have a little bit of a buffer. But what this is saying in the water business, uh, for Sean and myself, and I used to be a utilities director. We got to solve this problem now, because you do not want to be in a position, uh, this puts the town in a very challenging position. So we'll go to the next slide. Of course, we would never give you a problem that would be not good for staff or consultant to give you, bring a problem to, to city council and not without some potential solutions for council to consider. Um, and this is where we just heard about people ju, uh, council members jumping to the end. So here, oh, I'll stop here.
Yep, it's going to happen. Actually, uh, while we've been mapping this uh, presentation together, we actually also did a, a options matrix. I want to hand that out to council. And that's something we're going to be bringing back uh, to council. It's, it's sort of our, our cheat sheet of what we want to do moving forward to help with water resources. No, I'll hand that out and then we'll continue.
Brian, since you didn't specify, can we jump back one slide? Where the axes need. 2030, is that what you were talking about?
Um, correct.
That's when we would have a couple.
Yeah.
Starting in 2015.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's a declaration in 27.
Yeah, and that's without the current negotiations that is um, bringing cap water down, the negotiations uh, with the upper basin states. You're not.
Correct. This is just.
You're, you're not considering that here.
No.
But in, in our internal staff, we're, we're working on that also. Just, uh, but this is not part of the.
So what this mayor, council, so what this tier three reduction means is it's based off the Bureau Reclamation, does a 24, 24 month. Review and every August is when they set what, how much water they're going to deliver in the lower basin on, in January. So what this tier three is estimating based off of that 24 month, and I'm sorry, getting too technical, is in anticipation of next year, uh, two years. That they might declare what is, what is called a tier three. And in this case, we don't know based on the hydrology, is it 14%? This scenario, we also did a 27%. But I was just showing you, even if it's one of the lowest reductions of tier three. The town's going to have a problem with it. So we just stuck with the 14 as an illustrative example. We did a lot more analysis that's in that master plan. We just kind of simplified it to this one. We thought that was the easiest to get the message across. Okay. So what Sean handed out and, and what is kind of highlighted on the, on the slide is a matrix that uh, our team put together. Of short-term and long-term options in the highlights, uh, and, and then on the paperwork that you have, we added some pros and cons to it. For council to consider, this is what uh, Michelle, Sean and I have, have kind of put down on paper and, and uh, uh, identified the pros and cons. But you know, in the near term, what we are, what we are advising is some agreements. It's easier with the city of Phoenix, because you're adjacent to them, you share infrastructure. Uh, they're very so far willing to help and what we call water exchanges or storage. The ability to exchange reclaimed water to get CAP water or to recharge some of your excess reclaimed water. We can go into details, but I'll just leave it high uh, at the moment. The next one is the opportunities that you, you know, you're going to have a delta in the next full few years. Do you go out and have a conversation? There's, there's several subcontractors within the state of Arizona that have more. Uh, water than what they're using. And so can you go and, 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 and ask to purchase one year annual? Uh, if you have a deficit of 300 acre feet to some of these uh, subcontractors, 300 acre feet is very, very small compared to their allocation. Maybe they'd be willing to entertain a conversation about selling Cave Creek debt. And what that would only do is get you year to year until you could solve your long-term. We're trying to get you a short-term bridge. Uh, and so that's what the, uh, explore opportunities to purchase CAP supplies. Um, another is what was recommended, uh, what was previously discussed is to go back out. Reassess or, or relook at the existing wells, both in Cave Creek and Desert Hills and/or is there a potential for new wells? These are immediate things that the town can have control over and implement uh, uh, soon. Uh, other alternatives, uh, we just had a meeting today, uh, with the Arizona Water Banking Authority. Part of their charter dating back to the nineties was the state would fund uh, uh, and prepare the subcontractors for this day. This, when I say this day, meaning if there's a truly a tier three shortage. And we had a conversation uh, with the staff at the Arizona Water Bank of what? Because they don't have a firming policy or they have a loose firming policy and what they do have only goes through 2026. We have mentioned, we're probably not going to have a shortage in 2026. So we asked them, what are you going to do after 2027 and beyond? And they aren't ready to, uh, they don't know as staff and, and the state needs to have a conversation. What does that look like? Uh, because the town is in a much different situation than other CAP subcontractors. Uh, that I've done similar water resource planning, they have a, a different water supply portfolio that's completely different than the town. So I think it's important that we put that on the water banks. You need to come up with a firming policy, surprising that they haven't yet, but that was what we heard from staff today.
Uh, which staff was that, Brad?
At the Arizona Water Banking Authority.
Okay. Um, what, what are the, are any other towns in a similar situation to us that you're aware of?
Um, for future growth, yes, but they're on the fringes. So Buckeye and, and um, and uh, Twin Creek, thank you. Uh, but they have actual physical groundwater of what you don't have.
Yeah.
So that's it. So, so yes and no. You're, you're, you're actually up against two walls. You're up against the basin boundary. So from a hi, I'm a hydrologist, geologist. Yeah, you're, you're, you're limited there. So that's what a lot of other urban cities out in the, out in the plain, in the Phoenix metro can do is where you, you don't have significant groundwater resources. As an emergency backup.
Brian, for those in the audience who are watching, can you define easily what you mean by firming? Your firm, the water bank's firming policies?
I can, uh, vice mayor, mayor, vice mayor. So firming uh, is a, if there is a shortage on the river and the federal government says you're not, you're going to get, I, my example, 14% more. Firming is the Arizona Water Bank was charged with taking, back in the good old days, uh, excess water, putting it underground off the Colorado River. So there's many different physical locations in Arizona where we have been storing the water bank and others have been storing groundwater underground. So what the firming means is if there's a shortage to the town's CAP supply, the water bank. In two different ways can either withdraw those credits and put it in the canal. So you get wet water in the canal. Or we work with Central Arizona Project to do that. There's a couple of different ways to make it, but it's, it's to, the state had the, the state had the foresight. To recognize that things on the Colorado way, I'm talking 20 years ago, uh, uh, what do we do with all the excess water? And so we brought it into the state and put it underground and that, the Water Banking Authority was the state agency created to make that happen.
Which we have been doing since 2021. How many acre feet do we know?
We have just under 2000, I think, right now. It's our, our long-term storage credit account. We actually have been putting it all in to recharge into one of the CAP facilities, hieroglyphics. One of the issues we're running up against to is to get access to that water. There needs to be physical infrastructure at that facility. So there was discussions actually at a, a CAP meeting, um, I think a month or two ago where they were just started talking about recovering that water. But they were using the Tonopah facility out on the uh, west side of the, of the area. Um, so we have to figure out um, an opportunity to get access to that, that credit. Or is that's a long-term storage credit, something we can transfer with someone else and buy wet water on the canal? So there's opportunities, it's, it's still a benefit for us and I'm glad we went and did it. But one of the things looking forward, the top point is water storage. We actually have agreements with City of Phoenix to allow them to store and recover our water at three of their wells just south of town. So for the next two years, it might be beneficial, it have a cost to it to actually work with Phoenix to recharge ex, any excess cap water that we have for the next two years. So post 2027 or in 2027, if there's a shortage, we have access to work with Phoenix, get that delivered to us after the interconnects done. So that's something we need to uh, consider. It is more costly, uh, but it gives us direct access to wet water. So.
It, it, it just, um, at, at the mag level. The number I heard uh, a couple of months ago was that the plans are, and these are transportation plans. They're busily working on Prop 479, another half cent sales tax uh, to fund uh, more freeways, more uh, light rail, more transportation. And another million and a half people over the next 20 years. Meanwhile, on the water side, they're talking about these massive cuts. On the other hand, it just, the, the dichotomy between the different agencies in the state and, and the lack of bringing those plans together. Overwhelms a simple engineer like me. Uh, it, it, it just seems like someone ought to get together and kind of put all these numbers down. Uh, and I think the people in the room and those online, uh, there's many other things beyond that we're not putting in this here and other activities going on, uh, both at our level. A, and at the state level and CAP level and other places. So it, it's going to be, water is a good place to be in the next five years, I'd say. If you uh, uh, like to help straighten out big, naughty problems.
And I understand the city of Phoenix has more water than they're using at present. They, they have more excess supply than we do.
We hate, Mayor Council, we'd hate to put words in their mouth, but uh, yes. Um, it's, it's a mayor, yeah. So many, because of the issues you just raised, many of the urban cities are going through, what you're going through right now. Is reevaluating what are your supplies and what are your options? So it's very foresight. The council and sta, and your staff is moving forward with doing this because of the issues you just raised. So I'll come back to this slide if that's all right. So we just talked about Sean just raised the, the other bullet, which is a recharge, he used reclaimed water, but also when you had excess CAP water. Take that opportunity at any time uh, to continue to generate what's known as long-term storage credits. Uh, the last one on the short term is customer outreach and what's that's implying is water conservation. Uh, you may need to invoke uh, one of the opportunities if you come into a shortage situation is to invoke enforcement. Uh, and, and, and additional, you know, water, water conservation, I uh, education, customer outreach. Meaning if you don't have the supplies, attempt to address it from the demand side or both. There's some long-term things that we think you should be uh, considering. One of them is water banking. Again, we just need to keep an eye on there. The state has a lot of credits to a lot of water in the ground. How are they going to uh, take that out and firm M and uh, uh, M and I customers? So that's both a short-term and a long-term issue uh, for the town. The next is that here, there's been a lot of conversation on this and that, and I think we're going to come back next week. On the Bartlett Dam uh, uh, project, this however, project is a, is leading up, heading up. So we'll, we'll, I'll wait and talk a little more about that next week. Um, others, long terms are efficiencies. One of the challenges that Sean has raised is, is uh, the, how much extra, extra water as being sent to Rancho Manana? That doesn't actually get used on the course, it gets spilled off. Uh, and so that's another uh, not a short term, it's probably going to be a long term, but how do we get Rancho Manana to get, be more efficient with its uh, with its operation? And it, it does the town, can the town play a role in that? And then the last one is there will be most likely some opportunities of CP water that'll be out there for lease. Um, and potentially Colorado River water. So keeping the town uh, a price of what those are and when those may become available. Um, again, the pros and cons that you have on your spreadsheet tells you, uh, we didn't get into the cost, but once we get some direction from you. Uh, we'll be able to uh, ferret out some of those costs associated with all of these uh, options for you.
Would those purchases be ongoing or would they be year by year? In other words, you know, build a home, you need a hundred-year assured supply. The purchase of cap water, could that be applied toward a hundred-year availability? Is my question clear?
Yeah. Mayor, uh, Councilmember McGuire, so probably not home by home. Uh, certificate by certificate. Yeah, so subdivision by subdivision.
Okay. We're not looking at getting, in this, this last option, we're not looking at getting something one year that wouldn't be available by the year or two down the line.
No, this would be adding to your portfolio, a new water supply, which would be Central Arizona Project Water. Is it Indian lease is what we call it or some other option?
And those are long-term leases.
Those are, those would be long-term leases through the Department of Water Resources, correct?
Another question about the efficiency. Uh, the general plan indicated that uh, the lost or unaccounted water is still high, 10 to 12% above the Department of Water Resources guideline. Is that strictly due to the Rancho Manana? Or is there other loss or unaccounted water that could be kind of brought to bear?
So we have a couple of different losses in the system that we track, American Councilmember. Um, one of the things that we're doing, we're actually in the Cave Creek uh, upgrade right now, it's, we're updating the metering system. We believe that the customer meters are, are under reporting usage, so that once the metering project is done, we'll actually uh, improve the overall efficiency. Uh, we, we track things like, uh, one of the things that we can't, in that calculation, we're not allowed to use is the water we use for flushing the waters of the water lines to keep water quality in compliance. So that's one thing we're looking at. Are there other opportunities for us to do uh, new ways of uh, treatment and or operating the system to mean we have to flush less water, which adds to our loss and unaccounted for waters, non-build water, what we look at. So. And then the treatment plant itself, you know, we run a hybrid treatment plant with some older technology, West Tech filters that actually typically will produce over 10% wastewater. And then we have the Paul membranes, which are very efficient, less than 5% right now. It's a hybrid. So it gives us opportunities once the city of Phoenix interconnect, maybe um, not moth ball, but keep the West Tex as an emergency backup, which means we can run the plant more efficiently, which means that we have less water uh, being produced. But right now that backwash water from the water treatment plant is actually being sent to Rancho Manana as one of their water supplies. So they're all interconnected and it's something we're looking at, but we are trying to get down below 10%. We think the metering project will be the first big step, because we do believe, hate to say it to customers who are listening to this, that we're under billing people right now. So that'll get corrected as uh, um, and then the metering upgrades are actually also going to provide a lot more efficiencies, because we're going to get more real-time data to customers. So they can look at things like what are the leaks happening, so they can deal with it more quickly. So there's multiple things wrapped into that discussion.
Well, it's, it sounds then like another Paul filter is also an energy concert, uh, water conservation project. If, if, you know, 5% of it was the million gallons a day?
Um, yes, we have the two Paul trailers, uh, Mayor Council, um, that produce about 2 million gallons worth of flow. The, the plant's rated at three, so we run, currently we run a hybrid with the, the West Tex. But yeah, if we were to convert that plant to all Pauls, we get an efficiency, but there's a cost to that upgrade.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you take 10,000, I mean, last I heard was $10,000 to get to lease 100-year supply. An acre foot, is that, is that close, Brad?
I think maybe more.
Michelle wants to say something.
I shop a lot. If you were to get 100-year supply water right now, I would estimate it's probably $30,000 per acre foot, just to get the privilege and then you'd pay for all the costs.
So that pays the Paul filters out even faster.
Yeah, so it's something to look at. Yeah. Yeah, thank, but, but thanks for the discussion. So we're going to start off on actually physical improvements at this point. Um, so we'll actually have uh, Brandy come up. And start going through some of the physical improvements.
With Black and Beach, taking the time to talk with us today and, and Brad and Sean and everyone's been talking about understanding and coming up with a solution for the supply is, is just one piece of the puzzle. And um, so what Seth and I are going to go through now is really, if we can solve this fly issue, how can we make sure that we can get this water out into your customers? And so really, a lot of the improvements that we're going to talk about are into three buckets, right? You have some improvements that are needed to increase capacity. And so those will be our growth kind of um, type projects that we'd be looking at. And Sean was just talking about, what do you want to do with the calls in the West Tech filters? Is there a need to expand?
Oh, sorry. Um, I talk loud even without a microphone. So sorry now that it'll be too loud. Um, uh, again, another growth um, type um, of improvement that would be needed is one of the certificated areas that you do have is the, the Kahava, the area. And so in order to adequately serve that area, there is going to need to be some additional improvements that are going to be associated um, uh, to serve that area. And there'll be a couple of booster stations that would be needed. Um, so beyond growth and we look at performance, how is the system performing? Are you able to meet your fire flow requirements? Um, when we met uh, a year ago, um, we talked. When we met a year ago, we talked about establishing a fire flow requirement of five hundred throughout the system. So there was some improvements to either increase the the fire flow capability at some of the booster stations or put in some quick connects to enable you to bring in some temporary pumping at some of your smaller lift stations to increase fire flow to some neighborhoods. And then lastly, not only is it important to grow your system and improve the performance, but condition that is often something with these systems that we just forget about. When we look at these master plants, we come up with all these capital improvements, but we forget that you need to have the funds available to continue to maintain and ensure that all of these facilities are available when you need them. And so in that bucket, there's some additional assessments at the treatment plants. There are some areas within zone one and zone nine and eight where there might need to be some pipeline main replacement programs. And then looking at your C I, your C A P pipeline, it is a, you know, the single pipeline that brings your supply from all the way down to the canal up to your water treatment plant. So ensuring that you're going in and and continuing to assess those facilities. So what we're going to jump to now is a map, which is going to show all of the various improvements that we came up with. So this map here is going to be a combination of all. So it's going to be your growth improvements, your your condition and as well as your performance. And I'm just going to jump on, I'm just going to hit on a couple of them. And and there's lots of detail in that master plan that'll identify. But one of the the first and most important improvements that you're currently working on is that interconnect. You know, once you have the interconnect up and you have that ability to bring in a secondary supply to the to the town, it's going to enable you to do some of the the maintenance and 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 do some of the condition stuff. So just having that, it's, it, it doesn't, the C, the city interconnect won't solve that additional supply, but it will give you, you know, more supply. It will give you the ability to have a redundant supply. Another really key component is what we were just talking about is the wells, you know, getting a game plan for what can you do with the the wells that are for the town? You know, if drill, see what kind of quality, what kind of quality, what kind of yield you can? And if you can't use them as a potable supply, you know, is there a potential that you still drill them? And use that as a means to offset some of your reclaimed supply at Rancho Manana? Can those be used to offset that? Then you can trade reclaimed water potentially with the city of Phoenix. You know, the more wet water you guys can get your hands on, it just, it's going to increase your ability to make some different choices and and it's going to be a chess game. And so having wet water available to you is is going to be really important. And then the last water project, you know, we did talk about that Kahava. And there are some performance issues that are existing and will continue to get exacerbated with development west of Cave Creek Wash. And so as you guys move towards developing potentially additional infrastructure or modifying infrastructure out there, correcting some of the capacity deficiencies out. And we are showing on this graphic a single line that's running down Carefree, Carefree Highway, and then running up twenty four street. We looked at a couple of different options. So this is by no means the only option that's out there. You could parallel the the existing line on Cloud Road. But just to make sure that you're kind of opening up another straw to get some additional flow out that direction before you would continue to grow north. Those are the majority of the the water improvements.
I think we had one other one.
Do we have another one? Oh, okay. And then lastly, as Sean was indicating, we got to. It's important that the the town decide and and go in and do the study to assess what's going to happen at the water treatment plant. You know, when you have the additional connection with the city of Phoenix, where do you want to take your cap supplies and and what types of redundant facilities do you want to have between the two, the interconnect and the treatment plant?
And as part of that specific project, we'll be looking to do a scope of work to, well, Black and Beach had actually helped us with an evaluation when the town brought the Paul, Paul membrane units to the treatment plants for our first year, we leased them. And then we did an evaluation to show whether we should continue to lease them. And the recommendation was to purchase those units. We've been purchased them and operating them for the last three years, producing very good quality water for the system. But then there was also discussion on how to expand the plant and make it a Paul only plant. So our thought would be to spend some money and almost go to a thirty percent design level to get a really good cost assessment of what it would take to upgrade the plant to a Paul only plant. The old evaluation did it at a high level. We'd like to get that next level of detail. And then we can factor in things like water efficiency to the plant also. But that's something that's a project we think we could do. We're actually working with Maricopa County Environmental Services, which is use the operating permit for that treatment plant to expand, to extend the current permit, which expires this end of November this year. The Pauls were considered a pilot program. Since we purchased the units, the county is agreeing to allow us to get a seven year extension on running the current plant with the the hybrid plant with the West Tex and the Pauls. That gives us time to breathe, react, and then figure out what the the costs would be to upgrade that facility. So it's a good thing the county's allowing us to to continue that. But now we got to do the next step, and that's one of the projects we've identified is to do that. We think it's about a hundred and twenty five, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that level of details on that plant to get us to a good cost estimate. So we're going into it with our eyes open.
And so we took all of these projects and we put unit costs to them. And then so for each of the water, the wastewater and the reclaim system, we've developed kind of a near term, five year C I P, a ten year C I P bucket, and then a fifteen, and then all the way out to build out. And this was our first, you know, we sat down with Sean and as a team and and we put projects which made sense, you know, if they were needed for growth and they were put in when the growth, when we anticipated the growth to occur. You know, it's, it's a matter of of funds being available and there'll need to be some movement within this. And so we were looking for feedback on some of the the placing in years of some of the improvements as well.
Yes, we're getting into a lot of details here. So this is where, you know, what the next step after this would be. If you're okay with, if I don't know if town council has had time to look at all this. I have with staff, but the next thing is we'll bring it forward as a new capital program. And then also we're going to look at fundability of this. There's a lot of projects in there that have not been identified before. So we have to look at how, how can the town afford to do these and what or and and put that prioritization lens on to this? So that has not been done. That's going to be a step that we do once we adopt the master plan and and go through the update to this year. So we do a five year capital program. We adopt the first year's worth of funding, but that'll be the process. This gives us sort of the checklist of where we need to be watchful of, especially things like that second feed to, it's called Desert Hills, but it's actually the second feed to the west side of the system. So as again, as Kahava grows, we bring the do the web customers on as growth occurs on the west side of the system. And we have to continue to support water supplies to Desert Hills, augment them. You know, that pipeline is 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 a single point of failure in our systems. Now, we've, we've repaired the single point of failure in our cap delivery system with the Phoenix interconnect. Now the next priority would be that connection to the west side, west side of Cave Creek Wash. So can we afford to wait till twenty thirty five? But more so, can we afford to do it sooner? And that's something we're going to have to figure out and bring that back to council as part of a fundability program.
These numbers are very reasonable for us to be able to fund it. I mean, just, we're going to have two point one billion dollars of 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 debt service that's going to go away between twenty seven and thirty, multiplying that by twelve thirteen, that means we've got twenty twenty, twenty twenty two million dollars worth of bonding ability that we can fund. These numbers are within that, that's without any increases in in rates. Well, I'm not saying the rates aren't going to increase because we've got inflation and we have.
Other operational costs.
Other things going up, but but this looks like it's it's fundable. And I think bonds are a, are a fair way to do it because you're putting something in that's going to last for twenty or thirty years. Well, I won't be here in thirty years, so I'd like those people who are taking the water at that point to pay their share. I'll pay my share now and they can pay their their share when they, when they arrive. So I I think this is. I'm just, I'm just sorry, not the specific projects, but the overall looks like it's something that the town can that the water systems, not the town, but that the water systems can deal with out of their own rate structures.
Yeah, and we will, we'll quantify that for council as we move forward because we looked at all the fundability. And then again, obviously, this is a list and and the master plan provides you the overall list. And it's up to me and staff to actually put together the five year individual capital improvement programs that are coming forward to to council to look at. So this gives us the 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 list to work from to come forward to council. Then we can work with the rate model and the town's other bond, bond staff to see, you know, how do we do this? How do we bundle it together? So.
The the one thing that about this section that that still tweaks my interest is the T H N control. Solving the problem at the treating plant location rather than trying to solve it out by draining water out and flushing and things like that. Do we have any data on whether the the Paul filters take out more precursors than say that the old, the old treating system does?
Mayor Council, so we actually do measure the total organic carbon and alkalinity tokka at the plant. So the plant is more efficient with running the Pauls, treating the and the organic carbon is a precursor. So our carbon in the water, toric organic carbon in the water reacts to chlorine and has time to sit in a reservoir or in the pipes then creates the formation of T T H Ms and other disaffected byproducts, which are regulated. That's the technical side of that. So yeah, it, the, the, the tokka removal at the plant is much better. The problem still is we have a large portion of zone seven and zone eight and even getting to zone nine, where we do not have much demand in the pipes. So we actually have a lot of water age issues still to address. You know, one of the things Brandy brought up when she was doing the model, she looked at me and said, what do you need the Rockaway reservoir for? Because that actually is a place where we form a lot of water age issues in the system and we actually have to manually manually manipulate the system. That what I mean by that is we send water to that reservoir and we drain it down and back into the system. And staff still have to flush that area of the system to get water age down. So I'm not sure if we can do it only at the treatment. You know, I think the Pauls have been a great improvement to the system. I'm not sure of other things that we can do to help augment that and supply that. We're looking at other technologies for flushing of the system. There's a couple of different technologies for flushing the lines to see if we can get rid of this of the bio growth that occurs naturally in water systems to to see if that'll help clean out the lines, reduce some things, but it's, it's just hard. It's just hard, the nature of our system. We don't have a very loop system in a lot of cases, and we have a lot of single feed lines with very little use on them. So that's just inherent nature of our distribution system and we struggle with it.
Like Rockaway, that that doing some treating, doing some, some stripping at at Rockaway, stripping is not that expensive.
It's a power issue up there. So we looked at that a little bit. It's the the blowers that would be needed in order to do the stripping, the aeration and stripping on that was just even the electrical upgrades was, we were looking at over a million dollars to just get the electrical that would be needed to do that. So I mean, that is an option. I mean, that's, that's something that we looked at, like with the city of Phoenix interconnect as some, as a potential future. You know, I mean, that is an option. That's the only way and in the distribution system really that you're going to be able to strip it and then rechlorinate it. It's, it's a water age issue. So the option really to to is, would be the removal of Rockaway up there. It's you have too much volume in comparison to demand.
And the other specific issue we're running into right now is out in Desert Hills. The extreme west end of Desert Hills is becoming a water age issue for us. Actually, you have to do a lot of flushing out there because that's another of our monitoring points is is eleven street Desert Hills, another eleventh avenue, sorry, close to the edge of the water system out there because of the amount of of. And it's really an issue related to if we get more groundwater into the system, that's actually a benefit because we're using so much central Arizona project surface water. Surface water has organic carbons in it and that's the problem, inherent problem. And we're sending so much additional water to support Desert Hills that now Desert Hills has a T T H M problems. And we have to do a lot of flushing on the west side of Desert Hills and every quarter.
Well, it seems like the the other issue, there's, there's two reasons to put for Rockaway. I mean, if you can clean it up and and hold higher volume, because you've also got the availability of a certain amount of firewater. If if there's a fire downtown where you're, you're pumping eleven fifteen hundred G P M for a period of time, you're going to run out of water pretty quick. We've done that. We've run out on on some, the structure fires downtown. And we don't have a lot.
And that, and that's where the Phoenix interconnect will will physically change how we can operate the system. Where I know the history of Rockaway, why Rockaway was chosen as that site. And it it served the town well moving forward. I'm not sure if it'll service as well. And then when we start looking at things like fire protection in the town core, you know, as long as the treatment plant's producing water, we could be pushing two thousand gallons a minute into the distribution system. So if there's a fire event that gets buffered by the Niri reservoir, but once the Phoenix interconnects done, we also have a million gallon reservoir down and at that site that can also push into zone four and refeed Niri and keep water going. So it's going to drastically change and augment the town's ability to fight fire flows throughout the entire system. So.
Great, that's, that's great news.
Could you tell me what stripping is? We're talking about.
Please, please step to the mic.
And I'll, I'll do a nutshell while while Lisa's getting up here is we're going to, she would actually push air into the water volume in the reservoir and then the air bubbles actually strip the T T H M. It actually aerates it and then it actually gets into the airspace above and then gets dispersed into the atmosphere.
That's right, Mayor Council. There's a portion of T T H Ms that are volatile. It kind of depends on the, the ratio of more volatile, less volatile T T H Ms, how much you can strip. But that's the purpose of stripping is to remove those from the water and then be able to, unfortunately, also strip chlorine. You have to rechlorinate and before you send it back to the distribution system.
Thank you, that helps me understand the process.
Well, very good discussion and very technical for some of the people. But yeah, it's all good. And that's why in a master plan, we get very technical because we have to look at these issues. The one good thing that the town now has is the water model. You know, we've had water models before, two thousand thirteen was the last update to that water model. But the new model that with Black and Beach's help is actually now considered, the old models were static. So there were single snapshots in pine. The new model is actually considered dynamic. So we can do things like water age, we can actually predict that based on the consumption in the different zones, putting in the metering data so we can see where the issues will occur. So that's, that gives us another tool to work forward to be more efficient. So it's a great, another great tool or thing that we're going to be left with with this master plan, something we can keep updated and and run different scenarios on as we move forward. So with this, any other questions? Well, we can wrap back around, but we're going to switch or switch gears over to wastewater right now. So we're bringing Seth up to the mic.
One more question on groundwater issues in assessing the Cave Creek and the Desert Hills operational wells and what can be done? What modeling or what assessment is done for protection of of the exempt wells, the private wells in the area? How does that factor into that assessment?
Short answer is they're exempt wells and they, you know, if we go out and start running our wells, we're not going to be looking at the adjacency of them because the, we actually, as was brought earlier, we have a water right with that existing well to withdraw it. Sometimes we're going to be restricted by how much in the drawdown that will occur in that case. But you know, the exempt wells, the reason they're considered exempt wells is because they're allowed to go anywhere they want. We actually have a higher level of well rights with our municipal production wells. So as we go out and try to protect that, and especially in the town core, the ones we're dealing with, there's very few private wells in the town core adjacent to one of our old wells are. So we think that's going to be the case in Desert Hills. That's one of the reasons we actually had to stop development in Desert Hills is the number of exempt wells that were, the number of straws in that aquifer out there, there was no regulation, no limit on that. And that was impacting our wells that were out there. So it's, it's not an easy answer, but and we don't look at that standpoint, i.e. go out to the neighbors' wells and that we do a well drawdown analysis and there's a cone of depression that we have to look at. But say that we're going to have to protect everybody else's water rights when we actually have to protect the town's water system and we actually have a preexisting right with that well. It's, it's, it's almost a policy question at that point.
So if it is going to impact their wells though, then how are you going to provide them water? Because that's the offset.
Well, I can go back to the answer that they didn't collect to the town's water system. So you know, if our wells right now in Cave Creek would be in the town core. So again, there's, there's almost no. Well, I can go back to the answer that they didn't collect to the town's water system. So you know, if our our wells right now in Cave Creek would be in the town core. So again, there's there's almost no. Private wells in the town core area close to our wells. So if we start drawing it off, will we be uh a lot of our water actually comes from the east side of town, comes through the town that way. So. A lot of the private wells along Cave Creek Wash. I don't think any of the wells, if we start activating, will impact Cave Creek Wash and the wells that are up uh around Cave Creek Wash.
It it's just that I do believe that Arizona water law is if people have been using it, well, you're you're going to answer.
I was just going to provide the rule. I I can't say what the politics would be because there's that too. But the current, I'm sorry, it's on. The current um municipal wells are holding an authorized capacity because they've been previously used. Or they should be if they're old and I think they are.
Yeah.
So older precode wells can hold capacity forever. So if the well is used at that location or approximately that could. Location, they can use that reserved capacity. If they were to go though and put. A new well next to your well, they would have to run a well impact study and the state rules say how much they can impact you under those rules. So. That's.
But I think it's a good point. The the town, the town's got to consider all the residents. How that will work out, I don't know, but we have to watch out for everybody.
That's why we're going to focus on actually reactivating existing wells in the town core first and then Desert Hills, the discussion has really been about the existing casings were drilled at eight inch diameter and as those have been failing, there's no real solution to repair them. A better solution would be to re-drill those wells in a large capacity, not to get more volume, but just to make sure that we have a casing that doesn't fail on us. So. Okay, Seth will switch to wastewater.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Council members. Uh my name is Seth Morales. I'm with GHD, which definitely does sound like an engineering acronym, but it is not. Um so I'll be talking about the recommended improvements for the wastewater system, similar to the water system. Um we categorize them based on growth, performance and condition. Uh when it comes to growth, I think Sean touched on. Uh the two main areas that we focused on, so the dry sewers that are currently um existing in two neighborhoods. Um we. Looked at how we could connect them to the existing system and then the area that we're calling the Black Mountain area. We identified its proximity to the existing uh collection system and how we can connect that uh to send those wastewater flows to the plant. Um when considering growth in a wastewater system, I think it's important to note that uh you're limited to realistically how how much you can reach. Wastewaters conveyed through gravity and therefore topography uh plays an important role. And so therefore, when we were identifying um how much the system could actually grow, it was really. How close is it to the existing system? And these two areas um seem to generate the most wastewater that could be used as affluent. Um and definitely beneficial for the town's water resources. Uh in regards to performance, um. As Brandy mentioned, it's identifying how can we optimize the existing infrastructure's performance to be able to serve the town. Um and we identified a couple improvements required at wastewater facilities, uh specifically the lift stations and also some improvements at the town's plant. Uh that could essentially improve operation of these facilities. Uh there's also um some improvements required specifically for the forest mains. Uh that convey flow from the lift stations. A forest main essentially is a pressurized pipe that conveys wastewater. Um and so identifying what improvements are required to make sure that uh the town can serve um. The the customers, uh we will we'll talk a little bit about which ones are required in order to improve performance. Uh and then finally, condition essentially understanding what the condition is of the existing system is is essential to make sure that everything runs smoothly. Uh the town has done a great job actually uh performing multiple video inspections in the collection system and gravity sewers as well as manholes. And so we've um also identified a couple other um approaches that the town can take to also assess different components of the wastewater system that are a little bit. More difficult to assess. Uh and we'll talk a little bit about that here in the next slide. So similar to how we did with the uh water system improvements, we've kind of highlighted a couple projects that are related to those three categories. Um so for the two first two projects, uh as I mentioned, some improvements are required at the town's lift stations. So. Um if you see, once it comes out, the two rectangles on the top left corner of the uh the system. They're highlighting two lift stations. So the Chuparosa Lift Station uh serves the the area to the north of the Rancho Manana Golf Course. Um and then the Rancho Manana Lift Station uh serves the bulk actually of the wastewater system. And so for the Chuparosa Lift Station, um. What what has been found is that the forest main that conveys flows from this lift station um has actually become exposed. It crosses a wash and. Uh essentially, when a pipe crosses a wash, you want to make sure it's protected from scour just because um when it rains essentially that. Um that storm water can scour the ground and expose the pipe. And so unfortunately, that's the situation for a portion of the um. Chuparosa Lift Station force me that needs to be addressed just because exposing the pipe essentially makes it vulnerable. Um and if something was to happen, then you lose the ability to be able to serve that area uh to the north of the golf course. Uh the Rancho Manana Lift Station, again, as I mentioned, it it basically serves the bulk of the system because um. Everything gets sent there, so it makes it a critical lift station. Um there are a couple. Improvements that we identified as a team that would help um improve the performance of the lift station. First of all, its. Location and the elevation it's it's at um makes it susceptible to overflow if the system ever backs up. Now. If the system's operating correctly, that shouldn't happen, but sometimes it does, especially when you have a high uh storm water event. Um so. We've identified the potential of relocating that lift station to help prevent that. Uh in addition, the customers that. This lift station serve kind of nearby um seem to dispose of a lot of rags within um. Within the area and so that creates problems because it's harder to break down those rags and that can create some maintenance issues from clogging pipes. Uh to damaging pumps. And so uh one improvement we've identified to improve the performance of the listation would be to install. Uh screening equipment to to be able to eliminate those rags and make sure that the lift station's performance is optimal.
Are are the rags something that are happening primarily in that area?
That's my understanding.
Why would that be?
Um. We're currently perplexed. Um Chiparosa and Stagecoach don't seem to have the ragging issue that um uh Rancho Manana is seeing. So. The gravity sewer connection to Rancho Manana, which is the town core and and some of the the adjacent uh residential homes are immediately around town hall are are where it's coming from. So um. Yeah, it's flushable wipes and effectively they bind together. Um they end up breaking down partly and then they combine together and they become basically a little. Uh it's a yuck factor for staff to deal with, but more so it's potential for damaging a pumps. We've actually seen the um. The check valves which hold back the force main pressure get get clogged with them and actually have to physically remove the material. So. Yeah, so uh we do want to do some more education in the town core because that's where it's coming from. Again, we're not seeing it in Chiparosa and we're not seeing it at Rancho Manana. We're seeing, or sorry, um the Stagecoach Lift Station, we're seeing it up north. Or out through the town core is really where we think it's coming from.
Flushable means flushable. It means it'll go down your toilet. It doesn't mean that it won't harm the system.
Yeah, and I understand there's some uh work ahead to get rid of flushable. Most of the flushable wipes that you see on the back will say, you know, do not flush in the toilet. Uh but now they're going back to try and change that name.
Work that little note on the back doesn't work.
Yeah, I believe there's actually uh legislation to actually change that because it this is an industry issue. Um and it's gotten to the point where I think the federal government has gotten into saying you need to take flushable off the names. I believe there's some recent legislation on that. So moving forward, that'll at least help. But it's been people using it and it really started in the town. You know, it started just before COVID in twenty nineteen and started, we saw it after COVID. And we believe it's people using things like either that or disinfection wipes, the Clorox wipes and flushing them also. So it's the same same issue we have. They don't break down in the sewer system. Yeah.
All right. Uh so those were two examples of of that performance category. Um next, we'll talk a little bit about the condition aspect of of our improvements. Um so as I mentioned, the town has done a great job video inspecting a lot of the gravity sewers in the system. Uh and that's that's. Something that we recommend to continue doing just because it gives you an idea of what the condition is of the pipes and helps you prevent um any failures in the future. As I mentioned, there's certain components in a wastewater system that are a little bit harder to um to inspect. Uh for example, a forest main, as I mentioned, because it's pressurized. You can't just stick a camera in there. And so um you actually have to take the forest main offline in order to be able to take a look. At what's going on inside. And so um that requires a little bit more of a sophisticated condition assessment. Um one force main to highlight in the in the wastewater system is the um force main that convey conveys wastewater from the Rancho Manana Lift Station. As I mentioned, um because this is the bulk of the wastewater that's generating the system, that's a critical force main. And um as of right now, there's no way to uh be able to bypass it in case there's ever a break or in case you want to um. Perform an assessment to see what what its condition is. So one of the um. Improvements that we uh recommended in the master plan is uh installing a redundant force main. Um unfortunately, because of its length, it's not, there's not an easy. Um route uh that you can identify to to install a new force main, but um what we're seeing is is installing a new force main along New River Road would allow you to. Uh at least isolate the last portion of the force main, which actually seems to be the one that's more susceptible to um corrosion just because of how the hydraulics work within that force main. Um so that's what we're highlighting here in the map is that redundant enforcement. Uh the catch with that is. In order to be able to bypass those flows, you'd have to um make those connections of the dry sewers within those two communities. Uh to the plant because that bypass route essentially depends on being routed through those communities. Um which is also a a great incentive to bring those connections online. Um it provides some redundancy in the system and. Even if it takes time to transition from septic to sewer, um you would have flows that you could send through that. Uh through those dry sewers and that connection, new connection to to the plant. Um and so, yeah, highlighting once again. Um that in the growth category, it's really those two big projects. Um. In green on the bottom left, those are the new um I guess gravity sewers and infrastructure that would be required to make that connection. Um by looking at the topography, it looks like whoever installed these dry sewers thankfully had in mind on how that connection could be made. So we were able to. Model that and confirm that it would work. And then same thing for the Black Mountain area, which you can see in blue to the right of Cave Creek Road. Um through our modeling efforts, we were able to confirm that with the existing topography, we could make those connections and be able to offer a uh gravity sewers for that community.
So the 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 green line is is partially force main and partially uh gravity?
Yes, that's correct.
Where where's the break?
Uh it would be. No, like in point. Basically, if you see there's circles there that represent manholes, um. It's hard to to show without without pointing, but basically the left hand side would be all gravity sewer. The right hand side of river of New River Road would essentially be force main and that's where you'd be able to um. Uh bypass the existing force main and then uh discharge into the new manhole and convey that all through gravity.
And but the the uh so you're only bypassing the from where the green line comes off down down to Carefree Highway because it goes to a gravity. Gravity after that, doesn't it?
Uh yeah, and as council may recall, the the failure we recently had was at the end where the the end of the force main is is uh. Exposed to sewer, um oh atmosphere, sorry. And that's what caused the corrosion, we think of that pipe section. So when we actually, we did a few entries, we didn't do the best. Um along the rest of the pipeline, it looked like it was good and solid. And then we've sadly, since I've been here, we've actually had to open up that force main twice. Uh once because of broken uh inline valve and and uh some work at the ranch behind it. It's been intact at that upper level. So we believe the most of the issues have been down where it connects to the gravity sewer system so that there's air. Air pockets developing in the lower end of it that actually is allowing corrosion to occur. Um that's downstream of this connection point. So that'd allow us to do a full rehab of that section and then uh we can continue rehabbing the rest of it, but it seems to be in good shape, the rest of it, actually.
That's not that long a line, though. That the new force main is not that long a line to get rid of a lot of maintenance and future problems. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, but the problem is getting that connection to the treatment plan, I think overall cost is about six million dollars is what we came up with. So if we start this treatment plant, maybe we work backwards towards that to get us that. Outfall. And then there's an opportunity to also make some of that force main connection into a gravity sewer. So there are some properties along New River uh in Cave Creek that we could connect that that'd be something we have to evaluate. It's really about uh putting a valve vault in around New River and Cave Creek Road to allow us that secondary flow for the force main. To give us uh that bypass and backup with that lower section of the force main that ties into to um. Uh Cave Carefree Highway right now, Cave Carefree Highway Sewer. So we think this is a good option. It's expensive, but now we have it mapped out. So in addition to bringing on the dry sewer areas, uh State of Detroit, one and two and uh Canyon Ridge. Uh we would actually uh extend this a little further to actually make a bypass, a force main bypass for the town, which we think is a is a huge thing for us for reliability in this this sewer system. Since we just recently had a very expensive uh and stressful repair of that force main. So.
Yeah, and and just one other project to to point out as well, um that kind of helps limit the reliance of just the Rancho Manana Lift Station. Uh right now, the way that the the system operates is that the Stagecoach Pass Lift Station actually pumps up to the Rancho Manana Lift Station and then that's pumped through that force main. Um there's a potential and a project that we've uh recommended of just making the connection. Uh of the Stagecoach Pass Lift Station directly to the force main lower um in the lower part of the system. And so now you don't. You know, you know, you're not necessarily able to bypass those flows, but now it's not all coming from further higher up in the system, if that makes sense. And. And now you're kind of splitting up where the flows are rather than having all of the flows from the system come all the way from the top. So. Uh that's another approach that that we feel would be very beneficial, providing some redundancy.
And also improvements because right now we're double pumping the the flows that go into the Stagecoach Lift Station because we do send them north through the gravity sewer system to Rancho Manana. So. It makes it challenging if we have a wrench, an issue at Rancho Manana because we actually have the two adjacent uh force mains to manage. Uh they're sending flow to Rancho Manana, but this this would give us, we'd still keep the existing force main in service as a backup. But we the primary flow would go down south. So instead of double pumping, pumping it once, gravity it into Rancho Manana, then pumping it down the hill, we would. Take that lower section of the basin and and bring it down. So we'd see some operational efficiencies too. At that improvement. So.
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh for the area of the Black Mountain septic conversion uh to go from septic to sewer like that. Uh what uh portion of the cost of that goes to residents in that defined district? And is it voluntary or is it collective?
What? Mayor Council, that's a very good question. That's almost a policy decision. You know, we tried to quantify it with the master plan to come up with what it would cost. Um. You know, and I think again, the option like even the the green line coming back into the plant to allow for that flow if we were to divert the Rancho Manana flows through there, that that. Makes that an active line. Last thing we want to do is keep adding more dry lines to the system. But yeah, as this next slide shows is we tried to quantify what some of these might be. And Black Mountain Sewer um to do it all in one project would be very expensive. I think it's showing up at the bottom in year twenty fifty right now, Black Mountain Septic to Sewer at at ten million dollars, just under ten million dollars. So that's something we would have to work on whether we do that as an improvement district with those customers up there. I know one thing council's asked us to do is we're trying to map out when we get um. Uh septic waiver requests, i.e. someone has a uh um if someone's putting in a new septic system, they actually get a septic waiver for it, or if they have to modify an existing septic. So we're mapping those out. To see if we're starting to see failures in the specific areas. Um our first question, there's not distincting areas. It's really more of the growth in the systems. We haven't seen too many failures, but that. That may accelerate in the near future up in that area, which may uh.
They've had some sewer backflow or septic system backflows the last couple of big rains we've had. So a lot of those systems are put in the sixties and they're getting ready to replace.
Yeah.
So that that is something we ought to take a look at. Typically, the way I've seen that. Uh that happen in other locations is we pay for the main and then they pay for the connection. So the the system itself would pay for the for the uh sewer main line and then the ten or twenty thousand dollars, they would pay that. But instead of paying it, you have them pay a couple hundred bucks a month for ten years. Uh that way you amortize it. You're not. You know, a lot of those people are older and they they just don't have. Uh you know, expendable income.
Another factor we should probably look at if we went down that path is when we developed the capacity fuse a few years ago, um at the time, we didn't know if that was. Um at the time, we didn't know if that was gonna be a project, so we actually developed the capacity fees over a a small number of new connections. So we might want to look at that again, cause right now our capacity fees are fairly high in the wastewater system, so that would allow us some opportunity to lower that fee. If we think more customers are gonna come in and then spread that out, and this is a new project that we didn't anticipate, so we have to figure out, does the town fund it all upfront? And then how do we fund it? Cause obviously the wastewater system is one of our struggles, we only have nine, just over nine hundred accounts, so.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna force them to connect, then you've got to give them a payment plan over time, you can't, you can't dump a thirty thousand or twenty thousand dollar bill on. Uh the second question I had, piggybacking on on uh Ms. Driscoll's uh question. Um is there gonna be a problem with the steepness of slope there with the sewer runoff and what do we do about that?
Yeah, that that's a great question, um so. A steep sewer can create hydraulic problems, um what we found through our modeling efforts is because. Um the flows going within those mains aren't very high. They don't, they don't create those performance issues that you typically be concerned about. And so um what our modeling showed is that you'd still meet all the um performance criteria that's established by engineering standards.
Yeah, I know there's some locations that have fairly long runs and they're fairly steep and they have lots of problems.
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Well, there financially, there's a huge amount of money and prioritization, low hanging fruit. Cause we're, right now, you've got a half cent sales tax subsidized in the sewer system. And you've got another million and a half dollars a year historically, just going out of the general fund in the sewer system. So as you add people on, you start to recover that back end, plus we'll have another two point one million dollars. Uh that's that the general fund is now paying. Um that uh to cover bonding if we decide to do it the same way, but here again, it seems like we ought to. Prioritization and staging for the economic, cause this is gonna be an economic lift for the town. It messes, cause it's it's in such a hole right now, we've got to dig our way out and then we can. Start to turn this into a a neutral where the general fund isn't uh and we, you know, fourteen million dollar general fund and. Uh you got a billion and a half dollars in direct subsidy and another couple million dollars in. That that's a lot of money, you buy a lot of firemen for that that kind of money, which is one of the issues in the general fund.
Yeah.
So um this is where the uh economic expertise is gonna come into play.
Yeah, as Seth pointed out and on this slide, you'll see there's still just general condition assessments, you know, the uh there's a lot, portion of the sewer system is put in in the seventies. And some of it was put in the nineties and you know, we're seeing things like this across the street, we actually had a sewer line repaired today, it went very successfully. We were able to clean out the line, we're gonna do the liner in a couple of weeks. Uh but we actually had a section of duct lined pipe that was very highly tuberculated, we were able to get that cleaned out. Um and the the contract will come back in a week or two and put the liner through it. Um but we have a couple of sections like that, we have some dip sewers to still deal with, but a lot of our manholes need repairs. So there's a lot of ongoing maintenance to keep up with the system. But the the one neat thing about this is that if we do expand to the dry sewer areas or Black Mountain, then that. This is one of the reasons we did the master plan, that then means there's more flow going at the wastewater treatment plant within, exacerbates the issue that right now, the only outfall we have for that flow. Is Rancho Manana's golf course, which we know we already have an imbalance certain times of the year. So it leads right into our reuse discussions, which is the next uh chapter in the master plan.
So you're gonna check with Phoenix, see if they'll take our wastewater and in return, we get some wet water?
We actually had that meeting already, of Aaron Council, so um we actually had a discussion on the use of our exchange of um. Either uh, well, we discussed a couple of different options, uh one was a uh. City Phoenix has a reuse system that actually extends all the way north up to the golf course, uh what's the name of the golf course just south? The Valley Ranch, it's one of, I think, thirteen or fourteen customers they have on our reuse system, north of the Central Arizona Project Canal System. Um so we talked to them about, you know, could we tie into the top end of your system? So effectively, instead of you pumping the water ten miles north, uh we can we can give you some at the top end. Um well, it sounds good, they actually see some structural issues there, because the top end of their system, um they balance at that top uh end of the system. And then the water quality, um our wastewater flows, even though it's Class A plus that we produce at our treatment plant. It is actually uh has high to told dissolved solids and that's a concern for them. Um so we looked at a couple of different options, we just actually had a meeting with Phoenix staff two years, two weeks ago, sorry. And then uh another option that came up is do we do just a wastewater exchange with them? In that, when we know that we don't have a place to put the effluent, we could uh divert some of our wastewater flows to their their system. We talked about that and then they said, well, what about diverting some effluent and they actually preferred the effluent option? So our our treated effluent, we do a connection to their sewer system, the sewer system would then convey it down to their their. Their Cave Creek Water Treatment Plant, which they're currently working on an upgrade project for right now, and then give us a water exchange that way. That was the preference that they came up with, so that would mean that we'd have to construct a connection to the gravity sewer system to send some of our effluent down through their sewer system. So what, I'll let Brandy maybe speak to the tech technical nature, but this is the slide that we're talking about, the purple line is the existing. It's over a four or four mile pipeline that we send the water from the wastewater treatment plant all the way back up through the town um to the Rancho Manana Lakes. Um but we looked at a couple of different options, uh the orange was a connection to the golf course lake system that would go down. The access road to the the Phoenix Dump Site. One of the problems is if I was doing a direct connection to the golf course lakes, is that they're already a reuse customer on with Phoenix, so we'd actually have to enter into a reuse customer. Uh agreement with them, so you know, why would they work with us is one question. Then we talked about the idea of connecting to the reuse system, I believe that's the um the red line that we're showing there and you can see we have to come quite a. Quite a distance down to tie into the reuse system, so if we were to do a connection from the effluent line down. Um it's actually a shorter connection into their their sewer system, just south of where the um the Home Depot and Fries is. There's actually uh Brandy pointed out that uh there's a ten or twelve inch sewer main that we can make a connection to, which would have capacity for us. So that's our recommended option at this point, based on that discussion two weeks ago with Phoenix is a is a project that will allow us to divert flow. Some of our effluent flow down there. The other advantage we have is our water wastewater treatment plant currently, it struggles, um wastewater treatment is a biological process. Um so we we refer to it as keeping the bugs happy to make sure that they can treat the wastewater. Um and our our plant struggles in the summertime, cause our wastewater flows go down as the number of customers, as the number of businesses aren't sending them their flow. It's it struggles with that biol- biology, so our fear is if we we cut off the wastewater stream or send some of that wastewater to um. Phoenix, that's actually exacerbating the problem that we have at the treatment plant by treating it and then giving them the effluent. And that means the plant can still operate better, more efficiently, so that's, so we saw a bunch of pluses for us for doing that. And again, it's based on a conversation that we had with Phoenix just a few weeks ago and their senior staff. So it require a new I G A with Phoenix, I don't think we could amend one of the two that we have in place right now, but. They were agreeable to the op and at least starting the discussions, we could then map that out. Uh we actually have a program in this year C I P to help us map that what that might look like. But we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this study, so we can engage an engineer to look at how that would physically work and then work with Phoenix. And then get an I G A in place and then build that improvement. Uh be something that we'd have to construct and and have something in place, so it's not something immediately available, but once we get it available right now, we could save the water. We'd be looking at the Rancho Manana Lakes, if they're overflowing, we're gonna send the water to Phoenix, we can balance that out, cause that can happen in the summertime when a monsoon storm occurs. That gives us an outfall and we just work with Phoenix on that to send that water. And as we gain more wa- wastewater customers, that's just exacerbating the problem that we have currently with Rancho Manana. And I believe that's a good solution to give us a new diversity in our water portfolio, so a water exchange with Phoenix. They give us credit for the flows going down there, it would be metered and then they would allow us uh um. Uh uh exchange of new water resources back through the interconnect site, so we believe this is a good opportunity for the town to to diversify our water portfolio. And continue that relationship with Phoenix.
That's that's really exciting.
Yeah, yeah, so. And then this was sort of the the project scenario, what we're trying to deal with. Um we also looked at the opportunity, um in the the news, there's been a lot of discussions on direct potable reuse. So the town could go down that path of looking at building our own treatment, effectively the effluent from the treatment plant would be reprocessed. And turned into potable water supplies ourselves, but that could be very costly for us to undertake ourselves and actually add another treatment method. But um I think the the exchange of affluent with Phoenix to make a water resource is a great thing for the town to help diversify our water portfolio. And help us get the balance with our deliveries to Rancho Manana under control. And then we can continue to work with Rancho Manana on the overall efficiencies of their lake system where we deliver the water to and then also improve. Look at them and and work with them on the improvements of their use of water internally too, so. To help the town, you know, we do have a long-term contract with Rancho Manana, uh we send them multiple water supplies, but how do we get beneficial use of that? And right now, we're wasting fifty to seventy acre feet a year just in overflowing their lake system, because we don't have somewhere else to beneficially put that water. Let alone what else is happening up there, but I think this is a great opportunity for the town to really, again, diversify our water uh portfolio.
So is is, what about an alternate outflow for the for the uh for the extra water, rather than letting it overflow? Why not put it back in the auger for?
We actually brought on um Clear Creek Associates during the process of the master plan and their hydrological firm, and they looked at it, the opportunity of recharging. We thought about, why can't we just recharge the excess water? Um there, what they concluded was, well, especially around where the water ranch is right now, is actually a viable spot for doing uh surface. Uh spreading basin recharge at and into Cave Creek Wash, the recovery of that water is gonna be a difficulty. We do not have recovery wells nearby, so we'd have to drill some recovery wells. I was gonna ask them the uh to maybe look at it one more time to do if we do what's called an A R S injection well, so effectively we inject into the aquifer and can draw it back up. But there might be issues with, we might have to do wellhead treatment if we do it that way too, so we might need to factor in those types of things, something we can value it a little bit more. Initially, we thought of, hey, why don't we just recharge and recover, like I've done that in other agencies, but um their suggestions, it's not viable. We don't have any recovery walls in place and you might actually have to do wellhead treatment to it, so that's all adding to the cost of the solution, so. Um it's something we can value it a little bit more, but we're thinking this, especially when we had the the meeting with Phoenix staff, they were, they were agreeable to the idea of the uh water exchange. So.
Cool.
Yeah.
So that direct potable reuse at uh C C W T P, is that a study that you're looking at for fifty thousand? Uh the bottom one there, just before the twenty thirty reclaim C I P total?
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, that's, it's, there's something, if we wanted to do a study, we think it costs that, so it's whether we wanna go that direction. City Phoenix is currently looking into that at their Cave Creek Wastewater Plant and also at the larger regional ninety first Avenue wastewater treatment plant. Where they're doing in conjunction with the other partners of that facility. Um that's a very large project, I think Black Avich is actually involved in the projects going on at the uh the Deer Valley, uh or sorry, Cave Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. So, yeah, that would just evaluate that and give us a better, you know, the fifty thousand dollars would just tell us, are we looking at a million dollar project? Or a five million dollar project, we wanted to do direct potable reuse of our effluent. And for the amount of water, I think it's, I don't know, to be honest, my practical opinion is I think the variability in the flow and the amount of water, I don't think it's gonna be that.
It's an economy of scale issue.
Yeah, it's an economy of scale.
Yeah, we don't need more wastewater equipment, we've been heads too much for too long, I mean, that's been the problem, the town is over capacity.
Yeah, and this would be adding a new water treatment facility for us to manage, so.
So.
Sean, when we, when we approved that water treatment plant, the people sitting in this room, we go back through the meeting minutes. And they told us that we could drink whatever comes out of the, out of the water ranch. And I think I'd like to go back and find some of those people, have them come up here and actually show us how that works.
Well, the staff run it very well, they've made a lot of improvements, I'm still not sure if I'd grab a quarter. But it is, it's uh, you know, again, our staff do a great job of managing that facility, make sure that it's it's A plus, so it's highest highest quality, so it's um. Uh can be used for direct reuse, um but yeah, as far as it's not potable water. And that's, that is sort of what's happening in the industry right now, but on a larger scales, Phoenix is looking at it, uh Scottsdale's had a pilot plant for a number of years. You know, it's a water cycle and in fact, most of the times, a lot of agencies have been recharging that into the ground and then they use the soil interface and then you draw it up during a. Via adjacent well, so it's effectively been going on, we're just consolidating into a process. So, but it it shows the water cycles can contain, we're not making new water, so it's effectively using a a wa- uh. Water stream, which is wastewater and converting it into a potable supply, so. Okay, so I've gone through a lot for you today, um and then we actually have the C I P, these are the three individual tables. That we've, uh the master plan, again, provides a roadmap for us to move forward with. It's up to staff to then work on the feasibility of each project, the fundability of each project and then the prioritization of moving things in and out as as things happen. But um I think overall, I commend the the work that the team's done and all the work that's been put together with this. I think the town has a very good uh master plan, which is what it is, it provides that guidance for us to move forward with and see what we need to improve on the systems. So the next steps in the process are. So uh we'd like to bring this back with council's approval or any questions or any revisions uh at a future meeting, we'll ask for resolution just to adopt it. It's just, it gives us that a little bit of more support, rather than it's just, it's a staff-driven exercise, but it's actually something done for the town. And then we have council support to allow that to be the guiding principle, we'll update this every five years. The other one was more than five years since we updated it, when I first came on board, to be honest with you, I looked into doing a master plan right away. And I didn't think we had the infrastructure mapping and understanding of the system, so it's taken a little bit of time to to do things like or get our G I S system up and running. Uh get some other efficiencies things done, so we can get to this point that we can now have a master plan, so the thought would be every five years now, we can do an update to this. We have both a a good water model and a sewer model, wastewater model, that we can then keep updated intermittently, so that actually is a lot of effort that we don't have to move into the next update. Uh we'll work on updating a staff, the new uh five-year capital improvement program that will be presented towards council as part of the budgeting process next year. Um I brought, I brought forward the water resource matrix, this is one of the key things that uh gets or gets it, gives us a roadmap of what we need to look at. You know, it's it's got pointed out, we have short-term issues the town needs to uh work towards. Uh post twenty twenty six, this, which is when the current uh drought contingency plan for the lower basins expires. Uh there's an expectation that the Colorado River water supplies will be reallocated and there'll be reductions in in the individual subcontracts. What that means, the town technically is that uh we rely on our Colorado River water supplies and we expect there'll be cuts to that. So how do we meet both the current customer needs and growth in the town, so that's bringing new water resources in, so we have both short-term and long-term. So um that we need to be working on, the wells are are one, but other arrangements and other projects to allow us to. Secure the towns and diversify the town's water resource portfolio is key, um and we also have a lot of infrastructure improvements to work on. Um and then we do wanna bring in the um uh the rate consultants we'll do, um have done the rates and our financial consultants. Just to look at the fundability overall of the program that we've presented and then maybe that might move some of the projects out, allow us to group some projects together. So we could do, if we say do a a bond or something else, that we can group some projects together, so that's, that's the next step. Again, we're bringing that for, through the capital improvement program uh to bring towards council to adopt the the first year of a five-year program. Which is being fed into by a document, it's looking out to twenty fifty uh towards a build-out scenario. And then with that, we have, I know we've had some questions, if there's any more questions and comments, or if we want to open this up to the public and gather any more.
Yeah, I I do have a question, so options for second feed to Desert Hills, figure four, Tac eight. Um option one and option two look fairly reasonable, uh why would we create a really long option? To go from Spur Cross over to Cohava Springs?
We struggled with this a little bit when it came up, but if you actually look at it, um Spur Cross Road um is a large dead-end twelve-inch line in the town system. It was put in when there was potential for a large development in on Spur Cross, so it currently stubs to the north. We put a fire hydrant at the end of that line to help provide fire service, but that's one of the long dead-end lines that we flush a lot of water. Actually, I think the most water we flush in our system is Spur Cross. The thought is that, and it's something that came up with the idea of getting water to the west side of the town, if uh we're already pressurizing that water to pressure zone seven. Cohava Springs is not much more than one pressure zone away from that, so instead of connecting Cohava and the Dweeb area through um. Effectively two subsequent pressure zones to get it up to the top of the hill, one pressure zone from seven would get us up there and then we could use the twelve-inch line that Cohava Springs built. To flow that water back down, so that actually becomes our secondary feed to the west side, so when we looked at it technically. Because of the amount of water that we're flushing out, it does have some validity, working with Cohava Springs Development, I'm not sure if we can get that built. But we wanted to put it as a technical option, that maybe that's something that we wanna look at in the future. It would basically allow us to push zone seven water out of the system through Cohava, down into the west side of the town and utilize the existing twelve-inch lines that we have.
We're, we went through a whole, we we're currently going through something with the trail.
Mm-hmm.
My suggestion would be we change option three, if we choose to, whatever they, you know, they come back with on the trail option, just follow the trail. Going down Morning Star and cutting across Spur Cross, you're having to drop down fifty some odd feet vertically. And then you're gonna have to raise sixty some feet vertically, so it just kind of doesn't make sense where where they make the trail. It'll be a little bit easier as far as drops and things like that, so I would just suggest you follow the trail, wherever the trail goes. Cause you'll already have the easements at that point.
No, good point, we'll put that on there, so yeah, that was just more of a graphical that, again, initially, we didn't think it made sense, but then when you walk through it logically. You know, the the Spur Cross line is just oversized, the line that got built up there, and how can we move water out of that, rather than just dump it out the top of the of the of the line?
A second option might be to take in. A second option might be to take and push that line about a mile and a half up into Spur Cross itself into by the parking lot area, provide water to Spur Cross Recreation Area and then cut it west and then come back in to the north of Cohava Springs. That might be a more viable alternative than even following a trail because then that kills kind of a second bird, which is, you know, two birds with one stone. The second bird is it it now provides water to people who are going into Spur Cross. And Lord knows, we've had people having to get pulled out of there because they didn't bring enough water.
Good job. Yeah, no, very good suggestion, Mayor Councilmember. Yeah.
Well, let's uh, let's get comments from council and then we'll open it up to the public for brief comments if they should have any. So council comments.
You know, I'd I'd like to note that for the short term projects, the big one seems to be the interconnect. And that's already online. We're already going there. So adding the other projects, if you look at what we've already got, it's not such a huge jump.
It's a very good observation. I pointed that I said, that's that doesn't make the numbers look so bad when you pull that out. We've already factored that in. So you're absolutely correct, council member.
A comments down this way.
Could we synchronize with this with Hal's pavement master plan? So as we're putting new pipes in or as we're doing different things, we're not tearing up something we just put in.
Your council member, that's something we try to work with Hal. And again, looking forward, you know, if we have improvements in pressure zone one and then pressure zone eight and then through the town core, yeah, we want to work with the town insurance. A little cheaper if he helps pay the pavement.
Rather pay the bill once rather than have to pay the bill twice.
Yeah. That'd be up for me as staff to work with Hal now that we've identified the deficiencies and we can work through that. Appreciate it.
Mary, you're right. This is a lot better than the last one.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, we're going to have to, we've had a lot of projects come in two and three times the estimation. We had some inflation, but since we going away, but we're going to have to have a real effort in project execution. That includes accurate estimation and then the best in class bidding to get the pricing and to be able to reliably estimate a project and get it to get it put into place. And the other thing, other in the same area, I'm not sure we have the enough people on staff. Professional engineer sort of skill set for some of these things. It's been a problem ever since that 2013 master plan, which was one of the outfalls of that. Very shortly after was recommendations for additional personnel to get these things done. I I'm I'm blown away by how many low cost options there are. I I just, I did a real quick calculation of the way that Vermish well used to operate when it was in service. At 60 G P M, and that's about $10,000 per acre foot. Compare that to the 30,000 that Michelle was talking about. So that could get a project done at one, one third the cost of going out and buying $30,000 per acre foot for a hundred year supply, which then we have to supply the operating cost to actually get it here, which is very simple and pump it up the hill, which is right, there's a dollar per thousand gallons of energy cost. So, I mean, we've we've got tons and tons of options on the supply side that are small. We've got the freshwater being used, the wastewater plant, we got the overflow. I mean, it's just we we're covered up with with good options. I don't think it's going to come up to the kind of levels we need. We're going to have to have others too. But the good thing about the wells is we have control of that right now. We can do that right now without anybody else's in input. So I'm I'm very encouraged by that. I I I just want to say that the 2013 plan, this really beats it. And I want to thank people that who've put this this together. Thank you very much. Wastewater, Brad, Shell, who am I missing? And of course, our own water, our own water people. I think you've done a really good job here.
Our own staff.
Yeah, our own staff. Yeah, yeah. Sean, you and your staff, I think this is a a really good, good plan. And I'm I'm very encouraged by it. So congratulations to everybody. Okay, and Catherine, you have the question.
So very early in your presentation, you mentioned the Salt River Project Bartlett Dam potential project that we might get involved in. I'm curious, and I'm so grateful that we have four of our new utility advisory committee members in the audience. Because this was huge educational value for them. Are we going to having them be educated on the S R P project prior to the council deciding whether or not to pursue it?
Mayor Councilmember, no, the first meeting of the advisory committee, and actually, before we had that meeting with S R P staff that attended, I made sure that the utility advisory committee were able to knew about that meeting and this meeting tonight so that they could attend. But we, our first meeting will be actually after the next council meeting on Monday night. So, yeah.
We actually tried to get that scheduled and we thought we had it scheduled and we found out, I was it three members couldn't make it?
I think we three members couldn't make it and one didn't respond.
Yeah, so part of the, that was part of the challenge because they would have been able to get educated on this before council has the action on it.
Yeah, that would have been, you know, one of the biggest projects that we might undertake and their recommendation would have been beneficial.
I I think the other thing is that the the utilities advisory committee, hopefully it's it's a really good marketing effort because we haven't even touched on on residential conservation, which I think is huge. I I think we've got it. I I do my own measurement of my own pool consumption and also my irrigation. And my my numbers are that half to one third of the water is outside. So I I don't quite believe the numbers you have in here for your your recovery on on the wastewater system. I think they're too high. The percentage is too high basis my my numbers. But the the I I think you'll utilities advisory committee is going to play a really, really important role in helping the town. You're part of the government now. How does that sound? We we have nothing scheduled from the public, but let's open it up for public comment.
Mary, I had no submissions, but anyone wants to.
We didn't, you know, so it's it's would anybody like to opine here? Yes, please.
I just have a quick question, something I did not hear in this plan. And we talk about the groundwater wells. Obviously Desert Hills, when you're talking about how many acre feet you're getting, that doesn't last forever. And then if we think about activating our current Cave Creek wells, approximately 300, I think, was thrown out for acre feet. So there wasn't anything in here about, you know, rainwater harvesting or an injection wells. I didn't see any numbers on any of that. And my well went dry because of a neighbor. So my aquifer is dead unless I go beyond 13,000, 1300 feet. So I'm sharing and reminding that, you know, and we are going to have to rely more on groundwater. And we can, if we inject and we help our aquifers. But if we're talking about the what we're doing in Desert Hills and then maybe some here, just remember if we don't inject and do something. I live next to Row Wash. Once a year, maybe twice a year, I get so much, so much water comes through that. We have no plan right now and there's nothing in what I heard about when we get big rains, we have a lot of water here. We're not doing anything with it. So my question is, where is that in the plan? And I think that needs to be considered big time.
Thank you.
Can I have your name for the record?
Piggyback.
Thank you, Nancy.
I want to piggyback on that. Fortuitously, when I built my barn, we had a water runoff issue and I would end up getting two huge puddles. Puddles being about two or three times the size of this room. We put in two French drains. And so when Larson came out, I had used Larson excavating, come out and do it. They put in two French drains. One was about 12 feet deep, the other one's about six feet deep. And they figured on my five acre property, I'm putting back somewhere around one and a half to two acre feet of water every year. Now those French drains cost a couple thousand bucks a piece. But it sure would seem like when we do construction, wherever we do future construction, we make people put it down and put a French drain in. That recharges the aquifer. I mean, it's it's crazy amount of water that we get in Arizona. I mean, it's only nine inches a year, 10 inches a year. But still, if you take a, take a look at that per acre, you know, you're looking at at three quarters of an acre foot a year for every acre of land you've got, that's a lot of water. So just simple things like that. I mean, I'd love to see our town code up, you know, looked at to say, put everything back in the ground. And for people who are interested in doing it, Larson or any of the other excavating companies can come out and take a look. I mean, everybody has standing water somewhere in their property. That's where you want to put the drain. Just a thought.
Good one. Yes, just approached and and please, please give you give your name very clearly so we have it for the minutes.
Abraham Abell. So during the conversation, my mind was considering the fact efficiency and dollars spent. In majority of the conversation that we had about water reclamation and all these things, there are very, very large numbers that are assessed for these projects. Is there a consideration of where is the most efficient money spent for the maximum amount of money compared to the maximum amount of water that is going to be generated? I don't think that conversation was had.
Mayor Council, so we didn't specifically add that prioritization to the projects. But yeah, I think overall it's sort of blended into all the projects that were developed is, you know, we have infrastructure improvements that need to be made. Some are specific. So there's no real efficiency, you need to upsize a water line in zone eight to make it work properly. But as far as overall efficiency, that's where like things like the reuse connection with Phoenix, that's the overall, you know, sending them our our treated effluent to get water exchanged back to us. That actually fell out of a discussion on, you know, how how expensive would it be for us to do direct potable reuse or injection wells or something else? So, yeah, there was some framework of efficiency overall, just making the system from an efficiency standpoint and utility, we look at it from efficiency of water loss. That's a big thing for us. And then a water balance and how you tie that together. And sadly, right now, it's, there's a lot of big numbers involved between the infrastructure and or the cost of water, new water resources. So.
At the end, the council will have to decide financially what it means to the town. So perhaps it would be a good idea to provide the council with some sort of a structure, showing them on what the priorities are and how to really be able to maximize the funds that are going to be spent short term compared to long term.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lynn Walsh, and I'm a new member of the new committee, but we haven't met yet. My son lives in Tucson. He has this huge, huge recycled this this cistern that captures all his rainwater. It waters his yard. It is incredible. He drained it last year because the rains weren't regular, but it fills right back up. It's an easy win win and it makes everyone in their home more aware of the water that they have. I mean, the key is we have to be diligent in making sure that every citizen has has some buy in to this, the the fact that we live in a desert and we can't put up a wall and not cap, fornicate this, this, this state. I mean, they're coming and we can't stop them. So we need to educate people on, you know, the the basics of, you know, drip irrigation and all that. But having 35 years on my mountain, I've replaced the drips so often and I have so many leaks and it's so frustrating, but I want my beauty. So we need to educate people on harvesting the rain.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, our for our business is finished. Thank you again to Black and Wheat, Black and Beach and all the presenters and Brian, thank you very much and meeting adjourned. And welcome.